Good evening. I'd like to call to order this council meeting of August the fourteenth. Madam Clerk, would you read your roll call, please?
Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Reclu. Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
And Mr. Braun.
Here.
Six council members present, two absent.
Very good, thank you. You'd all rise with me. Pastor Bruce Waisen is with us this evening. He'll graciously lead us in the invocation. Thank you, and if you just go right into the pledge, we'll follow right along.
I'll do that, sir. Let's offer a moment of silence for the firefighters that have lost their lives in California, Heavenly Father, we realize the difficulty, the danger that's associated with public safety officers, police officers and firefighters. They take that responsibility and the courage that's needed with it, help their neighbors regardless of the cost or the danger. And two more will have services on Thursday that have perished fighting the fires in California. We just remember tonight, the diligence and the courage by which these men and women do their job every day, to protect and serve the communities they live in. And, Lord, we want to thank you for all of them. We pray as well for those still on fire lines, 14,000, but the weather hopefully will change and help them bring the fires under control. In the east, Lord, New England area, Pittsburgh east, the floods, a different issue. I pray for those that are facing overwhelming issues, and I pray for the safety of the general public and those that are working in rescue. We have a hope of rain here in the heartland of America, and we do pray for our farmers. So many of our neighbors and friends, Lord, feed us every day, grow in the crops and livestock that we set on the table for our meals. We pray, Lord, for our farmers, for the rain they so need at such a desperate time. I lift up, Lord, those that serve this city, our mayor and council persons, and all those, Lord, that serve on boards and committees and lead departments within the administration, and the boots on the ground that work every day and night to keep us safe and move our city forward. I'm grateful for each one. Also, for those, Lord, that faithfully serve this city at whatever level I continue to pray for, but not limited to Mayor Benton and Chief Myers, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Shyland, Mr. Moore, and anyone else connected to the city family who needs your daily health touch and maintenance. I pray for the busy itinerary tonight and those that will share discussions that will be held and any decisions that will be made. Father, I pray that they'll be made pleasing unto you. We thank you for the gift and blessing of living in the community that is our home. We pray all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Face flag, please. Attention, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
At the beginning of each council meeting, we've set a time aside for anyone residing in the community who has a concern or something they'd like to share with the council to come forward and do that. We just ask that you limit your comments to five minutes, and we go from there. If there's anyone present who's not on the agenda, if they would like to address the council, please come forward this time.
Once again, Beverly Gray, 112 West Oliver Fulton. I'm here to address my continuing concerns on the rezoning of the property at Business 54 in Rice Road. To me, to have this, I'm not against affordable housing. That's wonderful. Let's find another location for it. I don't know how many of you are aware, if you have a child in the Fulton schools, they're one mile from that school, they have to walk. Do you want your child walking down Business 54? I'm not worried about property values. I'm worried about the young people that will be in this location. Maybe with this new park and recreation things, maybe we should approach a hotel, let them come in. That would give us some money. I don't see how affordable housing is going to increase the financing of Fulton in any way, shape or form. I just, I'm just, I have a great, great concern for the young people. I believe Mr. Bell told us in previous meetings, he has tried for 10 or 11 years to sell this property. In contacting some realtors, Cole, Boone and Callaway Counties, he hasn't talked to any of them. The first time it was listed with a realtor was approximately two years ago with a local realtor. So for the safety of the young people that would be in this housing, build it, but build it in a different location. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else would like to address the council? I think I saw someone get up over here.
This is Joseph Garner, a youth 180 participant that's been interning at the city in all of our different departments. How's it going, Joe?
Good.
Good.
So, my name's Joseph Garner. I live on 604 Grand Avenue. So, I got into this internship through the Youth 180 program at the Missouri Job Center. It helps low-income youth and at-risk youth gain and retain employment and help out in the community. So throughout this internship, I've experienced a lot of friendly and patient staff that've been willing to teach and train me with everything that they do and all the responsibilities that are thrust upon them day to day. I've enjoyed every single department at the state of Fulton, even the ones that I didn't think I would like, like solid waste. So, do you have, does the council have any questions for me?
Yes, Joe, you checked all depart, got to go through all departments, huh?
I...
Did you like the sewer treatment plant, this section?
Yeah.
Made a recent operation out there, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, what were some of your better, what was the best day?
I would say the best day was with IT, with the new IT manager, Chris. I got to see a lot of what he does, which I'm really interested in computers.
That's great.
So what are your plans now that you're, I think today was your last day?
Yeah.
So what are your plans?
I'm hoping to, well, tomorrow I have to go to school, so.
What year of school are you in?
I'm going to be a senior at Fulton High.
So, when you graduate from high school, what are you looking at doing?
I'm looking to go to college. I'm hoping for an Ivy League like Harvard, but I'm also willing to go to smaller colleges like Westminster here in Fulton.
Good luck.
Thank you.
What are you going to be doing in 10 and 15 years?
Probably working in government, possibly in city government, where I'm helping the people directly.
Nailed that one.
I think it's safe to say that the first time we met Joe, he was pretty timid and
quiet and didn't say anything to anyone, but now I had him for his last hour today and he doesn't stop talking. So, I think we've broken through that shell.
I talked to him three weeks ago in Michelle's office, and I just, at that point, I said, so what's been the best part about, about doing this? And he just said, "All the employees are so nice." And that, I can't think of a nicer compliment you're going to give than the city and the community and the employees that he's been sharing the summer with. So, thank you for, thank you for sharing the summer with us.
My first experience with Joe was, he was my instructor when he'd come to the computer, and he knows what he's doing.
He does.
Joe, I know the city has benefited from you working with us, and we appreciate your attitude and your stick to it in this, and we're glad that you had a positive experience because we had one also. So, thank you again.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you for spending your summer with us.
Okay. Do we have anyone else? Okay.
Jeremy, can you do something about that buzz?
So, I am Cassie Santough, and 4194 Terra Lake Drive here in Fulton. And I am with Jerry Polston, Erica Polston, and then my husband Matt and daughter Ava. And we are here to just ask for your blessing on a proposal that we have made to the Brick District and to turn the bricks gold for September, which is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. This is something that I have dreamed about since Sam was diagnosed, and I believe Erica and Jeremy are very excited to try to see something like this happen as well. I have submitted a quick proposal. I hope that you all have copies of what those might be in front of you. If not, I have one that we can circulate here for you. And I just want to say thank you because the city of Fulton has been amazing to us over and over and over again, and we really have been so incredibly blessed. What this proposal will do, will basically put new banners up on the Brick District lamp posts that really highlight the need for childhood cancer awareness. We have talked to the Brick District about offering clings that are informational in their store windows. They're going to turn everything gold in their store windows as well and just support the movement. This is a, it's a free, free thing to do. The foundation is going to cover expenses for it, and it's just a really big deal for pediatric cancer and the community that it has engulfed, in Callaway County and beyond. One thing that we hope to do with this is to bring as much media attention to Fulton and to the Brick District in this great small town that we get to call home. And I think that we're going to be very successful in doing that. We've already gotten semi-commitments based on whether or not we get approved to do it from the local TV stations, radio stations, and we plan to reach out beyond there, too. The childhood cancer community is a tight-knit community, and we are very confident that this will explode for them because this isn't something that happens every day. And we're really, really excited to see it happen. The Brick District approved it unanimously, and that was very exciting for us as well. So, I don't know if you have any questions on any of this, but the one thing that we will also be asking to do is to turn the fountain gold for the month of September as well. So, we have, Bill Johnson has been very gracious to hear us here over the last few weeks, and we appreciate that, as well as Courtney and as well as Robert Boone as well. So, we appreciate that. We've done a little bit of legwork here to make sure that everything can be done in a timely way, very efficiently, and at no cost to the city. So, just, we're here to ask your blessing.
So, the city's involvement, they would supply us new banners. The crew would go and swap out those banners for the entire month of September downtown, just on Court Street. She will supply us some dye to put in the fountain. We have checked it out. It's not going to, it's not going to stain the concrete. It's not going to, we've dyed the fountain different colors before, we've just never done gold before, and we've always had really good luck. So, they have some approved dyes that we're looking at. They're also looking at a banner that would cross the road. We don't have a location downtown for, to tie off a banner on both sides of the street, but what we could do is if they're so interested and so willing, get the banner following the rules that have been established with the Chamber of Commerce for the banner placement, and we could put it up on Business 54 someplace where the banners generally go. And then at the end of September, we change the water in the fountain and take the banners down, put the old ones back up.
Did I hear you wanted to change, to dye the street green, I mean gold?
No, sorry. So, we just, yeah. So, really, it's just a play on words, to turn the bricks gold.
Oh, okay.
Just a way to acknowledge the Brick District and get some promotion there as well, and then gold. So, actually, the first idea was to paint the bricks gold, and Ava asked me specifically if that meant that we were going to literally spray paint the bricks gold, and I was like, no, no, no. And then it's like, okay, we need to come up with a different, different term of phrase.
I went to school at Ralla, and we painted the streets green.
Yeah, there you go.
And everything else we could get our hands on. Police cars and street lights and...
Yeah. Well, we're not asking for that much.
Okay. The banner, can we go building to building?
We, the city of Fulton is not going to attach a banner to a building.
Okay.
If they can, if they are so fortunate as to find a building downtown that is going to allow them to put anchors in their building and tie it off to their building across the street, more power to them.
Okay.
The city of Fulton is not going to be involved in that process.
Got you. Okay.
And that's completely okay. Yeah.
So, I think they were here just basically kind of telling you what's going to happen rather than totally asking permission and just make sure that everybody's, everybody's okay with it. Are you two guys two with...
I'm good with it.
We've had several conversations, and yeah, it's, we're good.
I think in talking to you, you had mentioned there were some businesses not on Court Street that are part of the Brick District that you wanted to put the, you were going to supply banners for, is that...
We are willing to supply banners for anybody who wants one. Anywhere we're willing to put one. But I do know that it was going, the proposal was for the entire Brick District, and so all of the businesses in the Brick District are going to be supporting it in one way or another. So whether or not they're going to hold a special at their stores, they're going to have our leaflets and flyers explaining why pediatric cancer awareness is important. And, and so, that would really be up to you all. But we'll supply the banners, and we're getting them printed free of cost as well, so.
You bring some banners, we'll get them up.
That's awesome. Thank you. Well, we're very excited, and I think this will be good for the childhood cancer community. I know our families, it's going to mean a lot to us. So, thank you very much, and we'll do our best to represent Fulton well and all the promotions for it.
Casey, is the best, is that a good email address to reach you at?
Um, yes. It's on there. Absolutely.
Supersamfoundation.com.
Uh-huh. Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you. I probably ran over my five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Look forward to September. We're going to be gold. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any, anyone else present who'd like to address the council? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on with our agenda. Tonight, we have a public hearing. The hearing is to consider a rezoning request for 711 and 715 Nichols, and the present zoning is R3, and they're requesting to go to C2 commercial. During our public hearing, we'll take comments only from those who would like to discuss this issue. And during the hearing, I'll make three calls for anyone who wishing to speak in opposition to the matter, and then three calls for anyone speaking in support of the matter. And I'll also mention that that's not limited just to three people, so if there's more than, you know, someone, just come on up and stand behind the presenter, and then we'll recognize you as we come to that. So at this time, we'll go ahead and call the public hearing to order, and at this time, I've already said what we're going to consider, so therefore we'll go on to, I'll issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this rezoning being considered, and at this, at this time, I'll issue the first call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed rezoning? Please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go to the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning? Again, seeing no one coming forward, I'll issue the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed rezoning? Thank you. No one coming forward. I'll now issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter being considered. First call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed rezoning?
Good evening, Mayor Benton and council people, persons. My name is Rebecca Dungerpeak. I'm the pastor at Court Street United Methodist Church. My address is 907 Lyle Street in Fulton, Missouri. The property belongs to our church currently. We had been in the process of revisioning and reconsidering our mission, and owning that property is no longer in our mission and vision. And that means we'd like to sell it. It was commercial, zoned with Curves being our renters, and Curves not only closed their business, but then because their license expired, then we lost the commercial zoning as we were trying to sell the property, and it reverted back to residential. We would like to get commercial zoning again so that we can have more luck with selling it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm Les Hudson, 903 Bradley Lane, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Johnson, council. We have, and when I say we, the Methodist Church has owned that building for 10 years. Had we been able to sell that building in April, we wouldn't be standing before you because it would have been an automatic commercial deal, but we didn't get it done. So it needs to be zoned as a commercial for us to sell it that way. That building has been a commercial, ever since, a commercial building ever since it was built. It was built over 100 years ago. It started out as a stables. It's been a feed store, it's been a garage, it's been a truck center, it's been Curves, it's been, at one point, it was the YMCA. So it's been a number of things over the years that were all commercial. And we just need to get it zoned commercial so we can sell it as such. If, I really don't know what you'd do the, with the building if it wasn't zoned commercial. Probably just have to tear it down and build apartments or something there. So we'd like to see this advanced on and get zoned commercial so we can sell it as such. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I'll issue the second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed rezoning?
Good evening. My name's Linda Roots. I live at 315 West 7th Street, where I own that home with my husband, John. And we also own the home next door, which we use as a rental property. And we are very invested in the neighborhood. I'm a member of the church. I'm interested in affordable housing, as you all know, and interested in the central part of town. And I do believe that for this property to be rezoned commercial, have a good tenant there, would make the neighborhood safer and would stabilize that property. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
I'll now issue the third and final call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed rezoning? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll now declare this public hearing has closed, and we'll move back to our regular agenda. Thank you for all your participation. The council will be considering this question later in, with, in our agenda. Approval of the consent agenda is our next item. Consent agendas are used by the council to expedite and hopefully be more efficient on some of the more mundane things that we do on the council, such as approving minutes and so forth. And on the consent agenda this evening is an approval of an event for our house, which will happen, looks like August the 19th, this Saturday. It's an annual fundraiser. It'll be in Memorial Park. The requested approval of a event on behalf of the Callaway Humane Society. They'll use part of the trail, et cetera, and the dog park for their annual dog jogs, and, which will happen on September the 8th. And then the final request is for the approval of the, by the Fulton High School Student Council request for a homecoming parade on Friday, September 28th. And I think this event's already been approved by Chief Meyer, and it's been run through the staff, so I don't think there's much difference from pre, previous years. So, is there any item on the consent agenda that someone would like to pull off?
There is none. I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Consent agenda stands approved. We'll now move on to unfinished business. We're going to ask our engineer, Kyle Brimmer, if he'll come up and give us an update on the 54, Business 54 project and the Fourth Street Improvement Project. And it looks like our next item is stormwater, so if you want to just move on to that when you're done with the other, that'd be great.
I'll go right through them. Business 54 project, hopefully you guys have been driving down Business 54 and safely and slowly, and keep an eye out for the workers, so. They've obviously started around Bartley School, and they are working their way to the roundabout. Their schedule, next week, as early as next week, has them jumping to this side of the roundabout and working on the city section of Business 54. So, hopefully, if everybody's been looking at the weather, you know, hopefully we get some rain. I hate to say that, but everybody, rain is, rain, rain is needed badly unfortunately, and it might slow their work down a little bit, but they believe that they're on schedule. They've been good to work with. Right now, I have no reason not to have any, have confidence in it, so they've been doing, they've been doing good work as I see it thus far. Is there any questions?
And just, I'd like to throw out that so far in the project, MoDOT has been an awesome partner.
Yeah.
They have, they have provided a lot of guidance and assistance in getting us to this stage, and I look forward to the continued relationship and their continued assistance.
Yeah, very good point. That's definitely true.
So, the, the work that I've seen so far is pretty much all sidewalk work, and some of the approaches, are they doing gutter work or doing something under the sidewalks? Are they, or is another company coming back to work on the curbs and the road, or...
On, on the state section of it, which is south of the roundabout and north of Alvedale, on their sections of it, they're primarily upgrading sidewalks to meet ADA compliance, so.
Okay.
Cross slopes at, at 2% or less, and also after that's over, doing a overlay of the road, milling overlay of the road. So, they're not, they're, the state sections, they're not doing curb and gutter primarily unless it happens to affect a sidewalk.
Okay.
On our section, we're primarily doing curb and gutter work and, you know, a milling overlay.
Mm-hmm.
On our section, we're primarily doing curb and gutter work and, you know, a milling overlay. We're doing sidewalks only, and I want to be, I want to stress, only at, at street crossings and at entrances. You know, we simply could not afford to do the straight sections of sidewalk. We could barely afford, thanks to your all's upgrading of the project financially, to do what, to do the curb and gutter and the street work and the storm, stormwater facilities that we can upgrade through there.
So the north of the roundabout, up to.
Up to.
The bridge, Alvedell Press.
Right.
Is ours. And that's gonna be some sidewalk work, mostly curb and gutter, and then eventually the electrical, utility portion with the.
Right.
Removing the poles and.
Right. And that's what, you know, most people have seen, you know, occur so far is all the, all the utility work from St. Louis and Bluff all the way, you know, to Thirteenth Street just north of Alvedell.
Right.
So, and that's an extensive, extensive amount of work that's gone on.
Mm-hmm.
And it continues to go on. So hopefully here, you know, that'll progress eventually to those poles being pulled, and we'll have the new decorative lighting and everything like that.
Right.
But I do not expect that, I do not expect that to happen before the contractor gets there and does the curb and gutter work through there.
Gotcha. Hey, thank you. But we still look for it all to be done by December, is that correct?
The, the contract, the contractor is supposed to be done by December, so, yeah.
I have a question about those sidewalk areas that we tore up. When is that planned to be put back?
Yeah. Bill has addressed that with me to some degree, and right now, I'd like to see all the utilities. There's our utilities, there's AT&amp;T, there's Charter, there's Socket up through there. I'd like to see, you know, if I had my way, which, which I may not get my way, is to hold off to see, because, you know, there's turnups, turnouts that, that they've gotta do. So more sidewalk may be affected just adjacent to the sidewalk that, say, our electric department has put in. So, you know, I, I just don't want to, you know, patch a little, a little piece of sidewalk and then have all these contractors run through there, and I've got more to do. But I do understand that there's a safety factor there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, Kyle, on the, on the 54 project? You only jumped to the.
Fourth Street.
Fourth Street, thank you.
Fourth Street project. Paperwork is dragging along here. We've got, MoDOT has given what's called a concurrence of award to the contractor, and the contractor's gotta get all of, all of his, he's gotta sign the contract, he's gotta get all of his bonding in, insurance, all, all those, all those items into MoDOT, and then MoDOT gives the notice to receive. I've been told that, that possibly just after, just after Labor Day that he'll be able to start. So unfortunately, it's painfully slow in getting this, getting all the i's dotted and the t's crossed and everything like that. Any questions on Fourth Street?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
I had a question on, on the Tenth and Bluff a while ago, but you didn't see me.
Good.
Kyle. The last week, three days that I went down there to the stoplight, I know it construction, a lot of construction went on there, but at one point, you said going south and north, we get a red lights, and we sit about four or five minutes before it ever changed for us to do anything.
Going south and north?
Mm-hmm. And the two sides, the Tenth Street, I'll get to go, and we just were sitting there.
Yeah, we've almost, we've almost blown up that intersection. They, you know, I, I do know that we have affected some of the, some of the loops that are in the pavement that, that indicate there's vehicles there.
That's what I figured it was going on.
Unfortunately, it's on a timed operation, and, but, you say four or five minutes, that seems, that seems too long.
Yeah, it did. It took me three times.
I know that I've heard on the east-west legs, it's been, it's been an issue for a while.
But it was kind of fun because we all, with Fuz, just sitting there, kept waiting.
I will have, I will send, send Jason with, with the Street Department's Traffic Division to go.
But I can understand till it's all done, but I was just letting you know it weren't that it was going on like that.
That was one of the topics at the meeting this morning. As they continue to tear out curb and do street cuts to make, so when they come back, it's clean joints, we know right now that they're gonna, they will saw through all of the detection loops. So Kyle and this crew are going to put all of the streetlights in that section on timer mode. So it's, it's, they're gonna all be on timer pretty much from now until the asphalt's laid and the detector loops are repaired.
I don't understand that.
Can't we do flash and red?
Okay. I'd also like to thank Jenny, she's been, been putting some updates in the paper on the project, so I'd like to thank her on that.
That's good support. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on the Fourth Street? If not, we'll move on then. If you want to give us your ideas of what's going on with stormwater.
Stormwater, let's start up here, from the beginning, here we go. Stormwater sales tax. All right. What we, what you see on the screen is sixteen through eighteen, the revenues collected. The obligated funds to date, if you look at the to date column, it gets pretty close to that number right there. The, the first thing we, that we pretty well spent, spent money on was a stormwater system pilot evaluation that was done in a section, you know, kind of downtown or just adjacent to downtown, includes Jefferson Street and Nickel Street primarily. We had a company come in and evaluate all the, all the stormwater facilities that we have or don't have in the areas that we need and assess the area and, and kind of tell us where they, they think we need upgrades at. So from that, from that study, they told us that, hey, down there at Hensley Field, Second Street, Hensley Field, Jefferson Street, kind of that area is a, is a pretty good bottleneck where stormwater just can make its way down to Stinson Creek. They suggested that a, a, another facility be, be built adjacent to Hensley Field that will allow stormwater to, to get to, get to Stinson Creek and get out. We have purchased pipe at the moment, and we have not constructed that at, at all yet. We're waiting to get that done. We're, we're trying to do a lot of things at once. That's expected to cost about, about twenty thousand dollars or so, and that's what city crews doing it, so, you know, keep that in mind. Jefferson Street is another section. We just upgraded, slowly upgraded, I should say, the sanitary sewer that runs up Jefferson Street, all the way to Seventh. And the contractor unfortunately took forever, and now we're going to torment the people, unfortunately, more in that area. And city crews are gonna be constructing storm sewer up Jefferson Street all the way to Seventh Street. If you drive that section of, of road, there really is no storm sewer at all. North of Jefferson Street Parking Lot is where it stops, and there's, there's been issues with, you know, residents around that area, and it's just, it just needs some storm sewer. So when they were, fortunately, when they were doing the sanitary sewer work, we did, engineering staff did collect data points where there's all the crossing utilities from gas, sewer, communications, all that kind of thing, and we're trying to miss those as much as possible. So hopefully eventually, we'll, we'll get storm sewer facilities all the way to Seventh, and, and potentially, this will be something that we'll need to talk about, but curb and gutter up through there is, is, there's not much of, not much of any on that street. And redo that street. Jefferson Street Parking Lot, we have just, we started sawing pavement on Monday on Jefferson Street Parking Lot. All the businesses that kind of are on the south side of that parking lot on, on Fifth Street, so a lot of storms, stormwater, when it rains heavy, jumps, jumps Nickel Street and ends up in that, in that parking lot. And there's also some coming down directly from the north, and, and a bunch of those businesses have, have got a bunch of stormwater issues because of it. So we are putting stormwater detention in that parking lot underneath pavement, and it's kind of an innovative project that also, also can help address some of our stormwater permit requirements as well. As water, as water runs through the pavement, there's pervious pavement that's gonna be installed. As it runs through the pavement, it'll be detained for a certain amount of time and then released in a, in a cleaner fashion than just hitting, hitting a open storm sewer directly. City crews are also doing that work, so we're trying to extend the dollars that we do have. You know, approximately, depending on sales tax, you know, four hundred thousand dollars a year can only go so far. So the more forces that, that, that we use in-house, the more we can extend it. That's also, that was also addressed in, in the Burns and McDonald pilot evaluation. They suggested that this was, that, that parking lot needed to be addressed. They also cover Nickel Street. We have not made it to Nickel Street yet, so, so we're still got our hands full with, with the Jefferson Street area. The two projects that I covered before this, Business 54 Project and Fourth Street Project are both being assisted with stormwater dollar funds. You've probably seen the Street Department and, and many other departments doing a bunch of work on, on both of those projects. Business 54, our crews have tried to do as much of the stormwater upgrades as we can to minimize extra costs by the contractor. So there's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars designated to the Business 54 Project and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Fourth Street Project. Any questions thus far?
The Jefferson Street, Jefferson Street Parking Lot work, when do you think it'll be done?
Well, I gave them a month, is what I gave.
Oh, okay.
Is what I gave our crew. I gave our crew a month, God willing, and the creek don't rise too high.
I know several business people on Fifth Street, and they're kind of interested.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure.
Okay.
And we, we have sent, we have went and talked with as many of them as, as we could.
Yep. Which is good.
The ones that we couldn't, we've hung, hung little flyers on to, and told them to call us if they can, so.
Okay.
Now, the next slide that I'm gonna show is kind of a pretty soft slide, so just keep that in mind. Future projects, we do have a stormwater permit that we gotta live by through DNR. I've got some things to address to meet our newer stormwater permit, and I'm hoping to get some help from, from an engineering firm to make sure that we address those properly. And it's also in combination with our TMDL requirements with the sanitary sewer element. There's some others on the list. If you've got any questions, I'm just trying to really show that there, that, the ones on the bottom are, have grants attached to them. Again, I'm trying to extend dollars by going out and seeking grants to match them with. If we can only pony up twenty percent, and we can get a grant to do eighty percent, we can do more, so. Any questions?
What's the South Business 54 in Collier?
South Business 54, Collier Tap Grant, that has to be on a, the tap grant has to be on a section of MoDOT Rideaway. It is a transportation alternative project, is what it is for, similar to what we're using on Fourth Street. And if you, if you drive from Westminster to Collier, you'll, you'll see that there is no sidewalk that connects the sidewalk that is nice and new that they're putting in now. It'd be nice if we had some, my thoughts were, it'd be nice if we had some connectivity with the sidewalk, especially with the new Willow Creek subdivision going in. It's right next to Bartley School. And meanwhile, we could extend the south end improvements that have the curb and gutter and sidewalk with that and beef up the pavement that gets put down this round. So there's a good three lanes, another, you know, another, another couple blocks headed north. So that's what that's all about.
So what do you think your options on the East Second Street Bridge, Dave?
The East Second Street Bridge? I'm hoping to get a grant there, too. We've applied for a grant several, several months back now that was sponsored by MoDOT to the federal government, actually, so we got their support. And, you know, we were, we were, they're very selective on who they, who they, you know, elected support, and we got a bunch of, bunch of support letters, and we were lucky to garner their support, and we're, we're hopeful that we get that grant.
Well, real quick, before, before I let you go, because you know when you grow old, you forget. When Greg Hayes was here, MoDOT said when they paved our highway out south, that they don't let them forget about the turning lane for the police station up there?
They should be putting that turning lane in this.
That's what they, when they come to pay, they said this year.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's part of this project that they're doing right now with, that we're jointly performing with them, so.
They promised just they would do it then, so.
Yeah.
I'm just letting you remind them that we still remember.
Chief Myers has reminded them, me and them, several different times on that fact.
I remember, they was here, and they said they would do it for us.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
When you say future projects, is that next year? Is that two years? What, what timeframe is that?
Good question. We've got a, it probably, probably depends on how quick we can get done with what we've, what we've got opened up and started right now, right?
Gotcha.
You know? I had a list on the slide before that that we're showing projects that were going on right now that we haven't done, done much headway with, but, you know, like.
And I know we're, they're working budget-wise, is why, is that, is part of that being figured into the budget as we move forward with it?
It will be, yeah, it will be. I mean, these are, these are items that, that, that are in my head. That doesn't mean that they're necessarily the greatest projects or whatnot, you know? So we'll have to collectively, through administration help, your all's help, decide if those are indeed important ones, or we need to pursue else.
You know, if we get one of the grants, obviously that one's gonna pop up on the list.
Right.
It's gonna go to the head. And some, some of the other things, we had a million and a half dollars of the projects up there, and he's getting about four hundred thousand dollars a year, so just to fund what was on the board, we're out four years.
Look at it this way. I came on the council in eighty-four, and they told me we was doing exciting things, building a new city hall, nineteen ninety-six or ninety-seven when we got to it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Very good. Nothing else for Kyle, we'll let him go. Thank you, Kyle. Good presentation.
I could go longer at a working session, if you ask.
You're, you're.
Bye.
Next item on our agenda that is council. Okay. Next item on our agenda that is council concerns.
New business?
New business.
There's nothing other new business, unless you have some.
Yes.
Okay.
I do. Long Cabin Road.
Long Cabin.
I, I know Bill has probably talked to Kyle once or twice about that, and I just think we need to address that eventually.
What is it?
Okay, it's a road that has not a lot of traffic, but it's, it's a road that we had taken up the asphalt because we couldn't, it doesn't have a bottom to the road. It's kind of a bad road, but now I think the situation has turned worse than it was when it was blacktopped. It's causing some problems out on the highway with dust control and stuff, and I just think it's something that we should address.
We'll see if we can't work that in next year's budget, when we're looking at the roads. Yeah, I don't think there's anything we can do with it now. I think the Street Department's grading it every quarter or so, aren't you? So, they're trying to keep it as smooth as possible. That's not going to do anything with the dust.
No, I, I had talked to Kyle quite a while back about doing like the county does with the, some dust, just anything to help, help the dust situation, and I think he did check around some prices, and, I don't know. You know, he was going to talk to Bill about it, too.
Very good. I'll check into that with him. Okay. Okay. Any other new business? Okay, if not, we'll move on to council concerns. Time bring forward anything that's not on the agenda, so, if you raise your hand, I'll recognize you. Mr. Shively.
I'd like to see us replace both of these monitors on both heads, put in some sixty-inch screens up there rather than these. I'm sitting here, right now, that's a nice picture, but it, but I don't know how it is for you guys on the other end of the table down there, but it's kind of hard to read when it's the writing up there. And face it, how many years old is all those things now? And I think we may have enough money in the council's fund to replace two monitors. These things here weigh, they weigh six hundred pounds apiece. And you can put these new, new ones up that weigh maybe thirty.
Okay.
And sixty-inch screens.
Then do you think, Wayne, the light would get in your way, maybe, if it's, do we, would we have to move them this way a little bit?
It could be adjusted.
I don't think it's going to make us look any better, Wayne.
I, I gave that up years ago.
Is there any, anything else you have?
No, I just, I think we want Bill to spend some of that money.
We'll, we'll have the IT folks look at that, then, okay. Any other, yes, John?
Go ahead. On, on Marbrook, we have two, I don't know whether they're sinkholes or what, they've been cut, but they've been cut for some time, like they're going to do some work to them, and they have not been taken care of, and I've had several people ask me about them.
Okay. We'll talk to Kyle, Matt.
That's probably Kyle.
Okay.
Isn't everything Kyle's?
No, well, Daryl tears it up. Kyle's got to fix it. That's, that's, that's pretty much the process.
Is that right?
Do you have anything else, John?
No.
Okay.
I have a couple items. One is downtown on Court Street, between Fifth and Sixth, there, I was at an event there a couple of weeks ago downtown on the weekend, and quite a few people were complaining about, there's only, we only have two trash containers, and both of them are at each end of Court. And some people were wondering if there was possible to get them, two more added to the center of Court Street. I know, when, if you come out of any building or backs, you got to walk either all the way down to Sixth or all the way to Fifth, instead of where the cars parked, you know, just having something a little closer to it. Thought that might be a good idea. I told them I'd ask and probably check on it. And also, I've got one other question. The house on Sixth Street, I, I know what the situation there is, but is the utility still off to that property?
It has water.
Does not have electricity?
It does not have electricity.
Okay.
It does, it does periodically run a generator.
Yeah, yeah. I think everybody lives aware, is aware of that.
So, is there somebody living there?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Even though we got an ordinance against it.
So, why, why do we have people living there?
For the same reason that we went to court last Friday on that individual, and the same reason we're going to court again on September fifth. We're trying to get them out.
They're campaigning out.
The individual has due process.
Okay.
Okay.
We can't always move as fast as we like to.
Okay, as long, as long as we're moving.
There you go. We're trying. I think we're on hold.
Okay. Steve?
I only have one, but I kind of talked to Mr. Johnson this afternoon about it, but I'm happy to say in our ward that we are getting, people coming in, buying homes and starting to remodel them. But I think that Dennis should work on, I think the city could give a little boost in helping that out by trying to speed up, by cleaning up property owners who refuse to maintain their property. There's a couple I talked to Dennis about, but I don't know how we can do it, but I think that somehow those who just refuse to tick up the trash and moat, that Weaver's going to have to figure a way to go in and just do the project and bill them somehow.
Sure. Dennis, you want to come up and give us an update of where, where we are on housing and demolishing and?
Yeah, last Friday, we sent out ten letters, the first ten letters we're going to send out. We have a list of about eighty properties that fit that kind of description. And this week, we've gotten responses from seven of the properties. The individuals, they are aware of the houses, they're, and willing to do something now that we've addressed the issue with them. A couple of them, there, I'm going to get a list of contractors that do demolition work and get that back to them. So, they're willing to work with us on this first ten that we've sent out. So, I'm going to send another ten letters out this week to ten more houses, properties. So, it's just a process, the, the new ordinance, you know, following it with the house on Sixth Street, it's going to take some time. Casey's been working with issuing, oh, for grass and derelict cars and stuff, and trying to get that stuff moved.
And the way, the way Dennis is doing it, if he gets, brings it to ten homeowners, it, makes them aware that they have a, this house in town, and they go ahead and deal with it, we're really not out anything. We're out, we're out the cost of a stamp and some time on the phone, but if we have to go through the process, you know, it's going to be several thousand dollars per house and location. So, I, I think it's, I think he's really working in the community's best interest by trying to get voluntary compliance. If the homeowner takes the property down, which several of them said they want to, you know, an individual homeowner doesn't have to go through all the processes that we do.
So, I mean, we've.
I'm surprised you got seven out of ten to respond as quickly.
Yeah, I was, too. And we've got a lot of properties that people out of state own, so I haven't heard back from those, or the three that I haven't heard back from. There are two houses on Clay Mine that a contractor bought, and he took those down last week. Another contractor bought a house on Bluff Street. He's redoing it now, so, it's just going to take some time. I mean, we haven't done anything in a few years, so, we're getting start, started.
We're working at it and continue to stir the pot.
Well, yeah, and I just, you know, as long as we kind of work, and they see that the city's helping and those who are buying and remodeling there, if Mrs. Root says we need a few more affordable houses, and that is definitely in my six inch sale. Just that it might speed up, but it's starting to look better in some sections of that street.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Steve, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. How about you, Mr. Shively?
No, sir, thank you, though.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions, of which I don't see any. So, we'll now move on to ordinances, first reading. Ordinance, Bill Number Fifteen Twelve is an ordinance that has to do with the rezoning of Seven-Eleven and Seven-Fifteen Nickel Street, which we had a hearing on earlier in the, in the session this evening. And so, I, I think, without any further ado, Councilman Moore, if you'd please present the Bill Number Fifteen Twelve, a title only, for first reading.
Bill Number Fifteen Twelve, ordinance number blank, and ordinance reclassified under the zoning ordinance, certain land in the city of Fulton, Missouri, known as Seven-Eleven and Seven-Fifteen Nickel Streets, and established effective date. I move this place at Nick's regularly scheduled council meeting by title only.
Second.
Thank you. We'll mention, if you noticed in your council packets, planning and zoning did consider this and recommended that we approve this rezoning.
And I actually, I was going to say, I've actually asked Dennis to come up and just read that section, so everybody's on the same page.
Motion was offered by Les Hudson and seconded by Mike Ible to approve the zoning request made for these tracts of land and to recommend passage by the city council. Roll call vote of members of the commission was as follows. Mike Ible, yes. Les Hudson, yes. Ken McSwain, yes. Joan Barry Morris, yes. Ronald Danny, yes. Jeremy Washington, yes. Louis Beatty, no. Motion carried with six members of the commission voting in favor, one member Beatty opposed, and one member Kelly absent.
Was there, was there a mistake on that? At the bottom of that? When I read that, it sounded, I'd have to find it. It says motion was offered by Ron, seconded by Jeremy Washington, oh, no, that's to Jeremy. Motion carried by six members of the commission voting in favor, and one member Beatty opposed, and one member Kelly absent.
Yep, so there are eight members, so six were in favor, one was absent, and one was opposed.
The roll call is listed in the sentence above.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear him read all of it then. I'm sorry.
Very good. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, probably. I guess, this is sitting right in the middle of an R-three zoning area across the street to C-one. They want to make this a C-two. I think there was something years ago where the council talked about spot zoning, and this almost looks like that's what we're talking about here, is just taking two pieces of property out of what used to be the zoning area, or the, the existing zoning, and making it something different.
I am not going to disagree with you, but I will say, due to the historical nature of, of the real estate, for the past hundred years, that property has been commercial. But it was in a, for some reason, it was, it was not in a commercial zone. No, no one, no one in the building can say why it was zoned, placed in the zone that it was. But it was, as it was presented during the public hearing, we have, you can look at it one of two ways. One's a non-conforming use, which would be a use outside of the traditional of the zoning, and the other would be a conditional use, which would be, well, under one of those criteria, because that property has been continuous commercial for the past hundred years, under the city's zoning rules and regulations, it could continue to be commercial for the next hundred years, as long as there was not a six-month gap where it ceased being commercial. The only reason that this is an issue this evening is because the, the building's been vacant for more than six months. So, then they, they lost that conditional use, usage ability on those two lots. If, as was mentioned, if this would have taken place in February or March, again, it wouldn't have came to the city council. It would have just been allowed to continue as a commercial district. But the property's been commercial use for a hundred years.
The only other thing I see about changing it to a C-two, and, and I get that it's been, been a commercial, all this like, but the property is for sale. It's going to sell, and, and they have no idea what's going to go in there. According to C-two, you could put about anything in there, right in the middle of a residential area. I just have a little problem with that. We're, we're kind of setting a precedent. We're, we're taking zoning. Zoning was made, or brought up to protect areas. I mean, they made this area an R-one, this an R-two. Now, we're spot, I'm, I agree with him, we're spot zoning. I think we're setting a bad precedent, but it's, it's looking like that regardless of where your property is, if you don't see fit that it's that way, that, oh, go down to the city, they'll change it for you. I just have a problem with doing that. And it seems like that's what we're doing.
Can I ask Dennis a question? Or maybe you can answer it? Is there another zoning that could be for this than other than C-two?
No, not for, not for commercial.
But under, but under R-three.
C-one, the setbacks. Your downtown is about the only C-one you will have.
But under R-three, if you read this, you could build about anything you want in there.
In R-three?
Pretty, pretty close.
R-three or C-two?
No, an R-three. Read R-three.
Well, R-three is what everything else is around it.
It is R-three. It's R-three right now, and you could do anything but a business.
But you can, you can do more than just residential on an R-three.
Yeah, but you couldn't have business. It eliminates your businesses.
Well, no, that's not true. Read R-three. The way I read it, it says, it says you can have boarding houses, lodging houses, group homes, group home projects, fraternity, sorority houses, dormitory, family daycare home, daycare centers, preschools, nursery schools, play, children playgrounds, instructional buildings that.
But it eliminates, it eliminates the, I guess, the commercial building, retail.
Hospitals, sanitary clinics, accessory uses. I don't get that. And that's all under R-three. And, and that sounds commercial to me.
It, it doesn't get as involved as C-two.
No, but then, when you get, then when you get C-two, read what you can put in there on C-two.
Yeah, it opens.
Groges, parking lots, used car lots, you could do about anything. And there's no guarantee that that ain't what's going to happen.
No.
They go right in there and tear that building down and build whatever they want. And you have no say about it. I don't, I don't agree with that.
Dennis, do you happen to know what happened to Seven-Thirteen?
Seven-Thirteen.
Seven-Eleven, and then you have an easement for a driveway, and then you have.
I don't do the addresses. Engineering does, and we discussed that, and I'm not sure if there was a lot back. And I'm not sure if there was a lot back, there's an alley, if there was a lot back in there and it got, two lots got combined. And so I'm pretty sure that's what happened with Seven-Thirteen.
You gotta eat up.
When we were talking about Seven-Eleven and Fifteen and then Nineteen, I think that's what we had come to the conclusion.
And Seventeen's the pad, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. If there's not any further discussion, I'm gonna call for the question. We have a motion in the second to advance Bill number fifteen twelve. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Could I have a show of hands on a no? One, two, three. So that's three on the yes. I'll, mayor will break the tie. I will vote yes, so we can continue the discussion of this at the next council meeting, so we'll move on to second read. Very good. We'll now move on, as long as no one needs a break, to second reading ordinances. Bill number fifteen-ten is an ordinance that's reclassifying or rezoning a property located at Rice Road in U.S. fifty-four. Councilman Simmons, would you please present by title only Bill number fifteen-ten for second read?
Bill number fifteen-ten, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance, certain land in the city of Fulton, Missouri, located at Rice Road in U.S. Business Fifty-four, and establish an effective date. I make a motion, we approve the second reading and advance it to third reading at the next city council meeting.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion in the second to advance Bill number fifteen-ten. Is there any further discussion of this motion or any questions?
I just go right back to what we've talked about before, listening to the constituents of the city of Fulton. And I don't believe we're doing that in this case.
Very good. Not any further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of advancing Bill number fifteen-ten, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
No.
I have a show of hands on a yes, no's. Thank you. Two no's, three, one, two, three, four yeses. Thank you. So Bill number fifteen-ten advances. Now we'll move on to consideration of Bill number fifteen-eleven, which is a ordinance that has to do with vehicles for hire within the city, or basically taxi cabs. Since Councilwoman McClellan is not with us this evening, Councilman Shilin, would you please present fifteen-eleven for a second read?
I'm gonna pass because I'm having problems with glasses.
I'll do it.
Okay. Councilman Moore, would you please?
Would you read it?
If you'd present it, please.
Bill number fifteen-eleven, ordinance amended chapter one-eighteen, vehicles for hire, Fulton City Code by repealing section one-eighteen dash twenty-six, definition enacted new section, nor their, establishing effective date. I move this for third, you want tonight or next week to schedule?
Could we do tonight, please?
If you like, ma'am.
I would appreciate that.
I would move this for third and final passage at tonight's meeting by title only.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion of Bill number fifteen-ten? We have a motion in the second on that to advance it to third reading.
You meant fifteen-eleven?
Fifteen-eleven, yes, sir.
Okay.
Bill number fifteen-eleven, ordinance amended.
Let's, let's vote on it first.
I was just going a little bit.
You're just excited.
Very good. We have a motion in the second, no further discussion on Bill number fifteen-eleven. All those in favor of advancing fifteen-eleven third reading, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Bill number fifteen-eleven advances to third reading. Councilman Moore, if you'd please present fifteen-eleven third reading by title only.
Bill number fifteen-eleven, ordinance amended chapter one, one-eight, vehicles for hire, Fulton City Code by repealing section one-eighteen dash twenty-six, definition enacted new section, nor their, and establish an effective date. I move this for final passage at tonight's meeting by title only.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion in the second to advance Bill number fifteen-eleven. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of advancing Bill number fifteen-eleven for final passage, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Bill number fifteen-eleven advances. You've heard Bill number fifteen-eleven presented three times. It's now time for final consideration. Please answer yes or no to roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Shiberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Brawn?
Yes.
And Mr. Shilin?
Yes.
Six council members affirmative to absent.
Very good. Thank you. So Bill number fifteen-eleven passes. Under announcements, I'm gonna let you all read those pretty much the way they are there. Although I will mention, if you're a bow hunter and you'd like to hunt in the city, I think it's primarily deer, there will be a four-legged guide. There'll be a permanent meeting on September the fourth here in the council chamber. And if you need additional information, please contact City Hall. Also, we'll mention that there's still time to sign up for the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament Annual on September the seventh. It'll be at Tanglewood. This year's profits will go to the lights in, in Veterans Park, the, the annual Christmas lights. So I think it's a good project to support, so we'll, we hopefully, and we'll also have a good time with that.
Is there a flyer somewhere?
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec, I think. Is there something on the website, play? I believe it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I guess might as well mention the annual Town and Country Dinner, which is gonna be on September the twentieth at Weiss Brothers in Kingdom City. And just let Clark know if you want to attend.
Motion to adjourn.
Very good. I don't have a need, need for an executive session, so, and I do have a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourned, please signify the same yes.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Got it.